Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Alderman Gelhard.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Dougherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
First item on our agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the mayor and council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? I don't see anyone in the chambers wanting to be recognized. If you are on the Zoom and you want to speak during public comment to a non-agenda item, you may unmute yourself and state your name and address. All right, we will move on then with our agenda. The consent agenda is the first item. There are four things on the consent agenda. The adoption of our minutes from our last meeting, approval of monthly departmental reports, removal and appointment of members to the convention and visitors bureau, and appointment of a member to the North Shore Fire Rescue Board of Directors and North Shore Water Commission, and that is Ms. Saffstrom is no longer with us. And the alternate on both of those boards is the city administrator, so it's appointing Daryl Hoffland. All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Dougherty, seconded by Alderwoman Shaw. Any discussion? Without objection, the consent agenda is approved. Hearing no objections, we will move on. New business. Item 4A, Recommendation of the Legislative Judiciary and Finance Committee for Approval of an Application to Change Agent for Aldi Store Number 42 Located at 6825 North Port Washington Road. I know that the committee met about 20 minutes ago and has a recommendation for us, so.
We move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation of the committee?
I'm moved.
Moved by Alderman Gelhard, seconded by Alderman Wheezy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Move on to item 4B, Review and Approval of Proposal for Feasibility Study of Two Potential Glendale Library Sites. As you know, at our meetings in December, we discussed and we did decide to continue on with the agreement for six months with the other North Shore, other three North Shore communities on the North Shore Library. However, there were two potential Glendale library sites that were presented. We did direct staff to go out and get proposals to provide us with feasibility studies of those two sites. As you see in the memo, there were two two that submitted. There was Zimmerman Architectural Studios and CUNY Architects. CUNY was significantly lower than Zimmerman. So if we want to make a motion to move forward with the feasibility study, the recommendation from staff would be to go with a lower amount. However, I would just ask the question of, should we be spending money on a feasibility study while we're currently in a relationship with three other communities? That fundraising committee for the North Shore Library is meeting every week. I'm getting feedback and notes and they are moving forward rather aggressively with their fundraising. So I guess we do have before us two proposals. We can choose to take either one of them, or we could hold off for a while, but I'll open it up to discussion from members of the council. Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we have the ability to have an engineering study done on these buildings. I think it's a sound business move to walk the dual path because if perchance the fundraising does not work, we need to be ready to rock and roll at the end of six months. And so I would make a motion to accept the bid by CUNY and Associates, or CUNY Architects, rather.
Is there a second? Second, Alderman Dougherty. Okay, any further discussion from members of the council? Alderman Gelhard?
Yeah, I just would agree with Alderweezy in the sense that if we, you know, come up with a situation where fundraising just doesn't make it for this Bayside situation, we're going to be in a time crunch to set something up on our own and we need to have something waiting in the wings to go forward with our own library. So I think this just makes sense.
Alderman Schmelsling?
Yeah, when I looked at the two, first of all, I have to agree that we really don't have visibility into how this fundraising is going to go. So I think it's in our best interest to have additional options, and these could be options. Looking at the two proposals, it looked like one was a lot more than just the structural assessment, and that was Zimmerman. So I think based on where we are, we just need to have a place that we could potentially have a library. And then if we need to take a leap into programming and other things at additional cost, then I see that as something we would do potentially when things fall through or if things fall through with the Bayside location. So I think they're two very different proposals. I do see Zimmerman is broken up into just the structural assessment. Given that that's not a separate thing we could just do with them, I probably think the cheaper one's better.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members of the council? Alderwoman Shaw?
I would like to propose another motion, which is a hierarchy of motions. Postpone this discussion until June, our June 20th, 2022.
There's been a motion. There's a motion made to postpone this item until June 2022. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, I'm sorry, your motion fails for lack of second. All right, so we have now a motion of to adopt CUNY Architects' proposal in the amount of $7,259. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion before I call for a vote?
I'd like to amend it to make sure it's not to amend the dollar amount, not to exceed such amount.
Okay, so you're proposing that.
CUNY's. Where am I at? Not to exceed the $7,259.
So $7,259 is the amount. What I would say is, if this is approved, I would have turned the floor over you to make a motion to direct staff not to approve any change orders. So if there are any change orders that would come through, we'd be directing staff not to approve those without council approval. Yeah, Mr. Lancer, Deputy City Administrator.
I just wanted to get one clarification, if you would. Joanne's has, seems to have a concern about the timing and a potential delay in that situation. I try to keep speaking. I acknowledge the other members' perspective of not wanting to fall behind if things fall through. I'm not sure if the council would be open to a month or a month and a half delayed to get another update on fundraising, or if they just want to proceed now. But I would think asking for a six-month delay all the way till the end doesn't seem to fit what the council's looking to do. I'm not sure if any delay is acceptable, but you might want to at least ponder that as a discussion.
I'm going to ask the question, are any of you here getting fundraising updates in the fundraising committee? So Alderwoman Shaw is because she's on the library board. Are you not getting, you are getting them as well?
Well, just what I've learned last week, that's it.
That's all they've done.
Okay, because I get a weekly report from the fundraising committee.
With respect to that, for the most part, yes.
Yeah, and they keep inviting me to the meetings, and then they hold the meetings in the middle of the afternoon when I'm working, so I haven't been able to attend any of the fun. But I do read the reports that come back afterwards, and they are making pretty quick and pretty significant progress for the committee, so. So I guess I'll just ask, is there anyone willing to make, I guess, a motion to delay it one month while we get a further fundraising update?
Do approve that, move that, whatever you want to call it.
Okay, so it's been moved. Is there a second? There is not. Okay, I'm sorry, it fails for lack of second, although I would have seconded it if I could, but then we would have lost the vote, so. All right, so we have before us then the recommend, the motion is to adopt the proposal from CUNY Architects in the amount of $7,259 in order to conduct a feasibility study of the two sites that would be the Gene Nicolay and the Green Bay Road sites that were presented to us back in December. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
Okay, opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Now recognize Alderwoman Shaw.
I forgot what I'm doing. I got a couple of things going on trying to make sure.
You were going to make a motion that to direct staff not to approve any change orders without council approval.
That's what I am doing. Got to get back on track here.
So it's been moved by Alderwoman Shaw not to accept any change orders without council approval. Is there a second?
Point of order, is anyway?
No, because staff.
Haven't approved more than that. That's what we've approved.
No, we've approved entering into this agreement. However, change orders come in and the city administrator has the ability to approve change orders. It's a certain dollar, certain dollar amount, but it's a percentage on, based on the size of the contract. So if they came back and they said they had something come up and they wanted to increase it by $1,000, I believe the city administrator would have the ability to approve that, and I think that should come back to the council. So the motion was made by the Alderwoman Shaw. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Alderman Schmelsling. Any discussion?
I guess I'm confused about what's going on here. So if this CUNY Architects wants to spend more than the amount that we're allotting, I would assume they would come back to us for approval, would it not?
That is not how the contractual process works. If you look at all the different things that we approve throughout the year, you say, street projects, you know, city hall, for example, change orders come up all the time, and the city administrator has the ability to approve change orders up to a limit. That happens in tons of our projects. And so I would, I would support this motion that if there's, if they come back and want to, because they may have low bid with the idea that come back with a couple of change orders, but a lot of companies do that, and they end up getting an extra 10% out of whatever it was they ordered, or they proposed. So I would support that. So does that answer your question, Alderman Dougherty?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Schmelsling?
Yeah, just looking at the proposal, it just has a single slide for cost proposal, and there is an hourly rate is included. So I think it makes sense to cap it off because that implies that there might be additional hours if they start to go beyond that. So I think it's prudent.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Is the idea that if there is a change order, would come back to the council?
Yes, we would have to approve it, not the city administrator.
Okay.
All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda is item 4C, Review and Possible Approval to Submit Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Program Grant for Proposed Trail Connection from the Zip Line Trail along the south side of West Good Hope Road east of North Milwaukee River Parkway for the 2024 to 2028 program cycle. And Mr. Imig?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thought he was done for the year. Couldn't just stop after last.
Yeah, I know.
I love.
Exceeded my quota.
The adrenaline rush, right?
Right, exactly, yes.
You've got five members of the, four members of the community watching you.
Right, right, right. Well, I wanted to bring this to you all because I know there's been talk about this. It's identified in the bike and pedestrian plan. And it was being forwarded by former administrator Saffstrom. And what I want to do is just identify the application and let you know that at this point, I mean, there has been no financial planning as well as other prep work to this point. And that's why I'm proposing we at least delay it to 2024, if not longer, so we can get, you know, identify the source of funding, which hasn't been. I know we've got a lot of things coming up. I guess in my opinion, this project is identified as an initial large sum of money. And I think that, you know, there's other projects we should be considering. I mean, Silver Spring Drive and Port Washington Road are both decades old, and quite frankly, Port Road has been resurfaced so much, we have no curb left. And obviously, next year, we're going to have Port Road from Bender North done, and it's going to be a stark contrast. So my point is, again, bringing this to you all, I know it's been talked about, but I want to make sure that we're, we're clear that at this point, I don't feel, in my opinion, that it's proper to apply for that without the legwork and the prep work and especially the funding being approved and identified for this project.
So the recommendation that came from staff, though, was for us to approve the application, and your recommendation now is to say to wait.
At a future date.
Okay. Sure. All right, so this, and if I'm not mistaken, this is essentially adding what would be an ultra-wide sidewalk that would accommodate bikes and pedestrians on the south side of the road. Because right now, we have people that get off buses down at Tetonia by the McDonald's and have to walk without sidewalks in the street or in the grass in order to get up to Aurora. Aurora seems to be the location that people would get off the bus and walk quite a ways for.
They do have a bus stop there now, at Aurora.
Oh, they do it at Aurora?
It's been there for a couple of years.
Okay.
Lot of employment at Stratech as well, I believe. There's some bus needs.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I still see people getting off, I still see people walking on the, on the road surface.
They actually shovel it sometimes.
Yeah, okay.
Just if I may, just to give you the big picture sort of 10,000-foot look, the a multi-use trail from Tetonia to Milwaukee River Parkway is, in today's dollars, a $3 million project. The, the, the funding source that Administrator Saffstrom had discussed with us was the DOT slash federal program that is an 80-20 split between federal and local. So we're at least looking at a $600,000 investment. We're also looking at completely owning this facility in its entire length on county right-of-way, which is Good Hope Road, with all of the maintenance of the roadway, all of the maintenance of the terrace, all of the maintenance, in other words, snow plowing, weed control, mowing, et cetera. These are things that we felt, well, certainly the operational issues that it entails drew a concerned look from my colleague here. So I think that, and looking at the five-year capital plan, you know, the $600,000 isn't there. You know, we spent 400 on resurfacing roads. This would be a big influx of funding, so we rather sort of take a step back and think about this thoroughly. That's why when Charlie said we should probably delay this, I'm like, yeah.
Okay. Council, if they have any questions?
Thank you.
District, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is solely within the fourth district. No, it goes into the fifth as well, a little bit. Yes, it does, I'm sorry. But when I was first on the council back, I was added to the council in '07 as a replacement for an existing alderman. One of the very first things I heard from people was, we need to have some form of pathway from the Milwaukee River to, you know, where there was a gravel path, but it still uses a bike path along Brown Deer, or behind Brown Deer Park, the west edge of Brown Deer Park that's now, I've heard it called Zip Line Trail, the Oak Leaf Trail, but it's now a paved pathway. All right. At that point, I had requested a traffic study on that along Good Hope Road, and Dick Maslowski approved that because we were looking at traffic and feasibility of having such a bike path along Good Hope Road. And bottom line, and I put together a summary, this goes way back to '08, when I put a summary together of previous Good Hope Road traffic studies. I'll give you a copy. I just brought enough for the council. I apologize, didn't have enough for you guys. But the bottom line of those studies was that it was really turned out to be cost prohibitive for the pathway, first of all, trying to get it through private property. DOT, or the county wasn't totally on board at the point. Now, there, obviously, they've come around a bit on that. But the DOT, state DOT, said it is, would not be permitted or recommended crossing Good Hope Road because of the size of the intersection and the traffic flow. And that was a major stumbling block. And so that really squelched discussion from that point forward. And so that's just for history. But I know Good Hope Road this spring, that intersection, Good Hope and Green Bay Road, is going to be rebuilt, but it's not going to make it any narrower. So those are challenges that I considered. There was even consideration of putting a footbridge across the road, and that was summarily shot down because it took too much private property away. So I think, Joanne, you may remember those discussions. So she and, she and I are the only ones on the council that backed that far. So just as, just for history purposes, this, we've done these studies, spent, the city spent a lot of money on a traffic study, and the determination was no-go.
Well, I concur with, with your perspective. The, you should know, though, you know, the Oak Leaf Trail crosses Good Hope Road from north to south, also crosses Brown Deer Road from north to south.
Understood.
So our point isn't that it's not a good idea or that it's impossible. Our point is that in, so in the next biennium and forward, we're looking at a very sizable municipal investment and potentially the need for increasing full-time employees to take care of these facilities. Recall that the portion of Oak Leaf Trail from Sydney Place to Mill Road was built in exactly the same funding mechanism. We own it. And, you know, some say we haven't done anything to maintain it, which is probably true, but eventually it's on us to fix it and et cetera. So I think that, that, and the little trail and the footbridge that we built at the tail end of Bender Park, Maslowski Park, and the Sydney Mill Road are the only trails that we currently own. The Tetonia Milwaukee River Parkway would quadruple that ownership. So you know, I mean, I think that this council should really look into maybe creating a parks department, a dedicated sort of way to maintain our trails. If we keep doing this, I think it's a huge positive for our town. As a resident, I would love nothing more than sort of connecting little trails that county owns with our trails and sort of develop that, right? We just thought that this month wasn't the time to sort of get into that conversation.
If I may just expand on the point that was really shot down on this whole concept of the previous bike path was really the Good Hope, Green Bay Road intersection. That's where the state DOT said no-go. It was just too wide, too heavily used for, you know, the bike and the passage. It's, there's dangerous crossing there now with all of the Orthodox Jewish families that do use that on a routine basis. But again, it's just history. That's all it's for.
What about Schmelsling?
But just so I'm understanding this correctly, so originally, the thought was there could have been a grant request this year, like, within the month. Is that correct? What's the next grant period thereafter? I don't know if you have that answer.
It's next January of '24.
January 24.
For '25 funding.
Yeah, because I actually looked up what these grants get, and this would be a sizable one compared to what I saw from other municipalities that were at least published on their website. So we'd have to kind of hit the jackpot on this, is what it seems. But at the same time, I think this is something that we struggle with so many other places in our community, is how we're chopped up across Glendale with these large roads without ways of getting across them. We have a river, we have a highway, the highway is just getting wider, more traffic. I think everything we can do, especially if we can get funding from the state to help address these things should be done. Now, the timing, yeah, that's, I was, I saw this on the agenda. I'm like, wow, I know we've talked about putting this in our pedestrian plan, but I had no idea this could be something we'd be moving on so quickly. So I'm very supportive of it. I've had people contact me because it is my district where people are right now shoveling and snow throwing a path on the right-of-way to get from the bus stop on Tetonia over to the medical center. So it's, it's not a safe environment, and I'm sure my colleague here can comment the same thing about the people trying to cross to get to synagogue. And that's also not a safe environment. So I think either way, we should move ahead. The question is timing.
But we do have, we have a recommendation from staff that was included in our packet, but we have staff before us right now recommending that we take no action tonight and that we look to put this into the next cycle. So I'll ask, if someone wants to make a motion to move forward tonight, you can. Otherwise, if nobody, if everyone just is quiet, I'll assume that's no action, and we'll just have staff bring it back at some point in the future.
Can we have them start on the next cycle at this point?
Well, they would be bringing it back to us for the next cycle. The next cycle is in 2024 anyway, isn't it?
Correct. We, what we would do to bring this back to you is that in five months, when the five-year plan is looked at, the capital improvement plan is starting to take shape, will include the cities portion in '25, '26, because right now, if we made it, that would be sort of the tail end of that planning cycle. And Sean and his spreadsheets will, will tell us if that's a thing, and if you support it, we'll start sort of planning it that way.
You bring it back as part of the capital improvements budget, which we consider this summer sometime.
That's what we thought, because we, when, when we, when we were considering the, the grant, we noticed that it was not in the, in the current five-year plan.
What about Schmelsling?
Yeah, because I just think it's valuable to really consider that because I know like the culvert replacement that's coming up, I asked about if that would support the width needed for something like a multi-use trail, and they said yes. So we just have to make sure we're constantly thinking that this is in our plan to try to connect our community and try to get our grants as sound as possible so that when we do apply for it, it would be not a scramble like it would be now, so.
That's important, too, because it is a competitive grant. We're not guaranteed to get this. So again, the reason for proper planning, to put forth the best, to submit a.
And it'd be a big windfall.
Alderwoman Shaw?
I just would like to, since the two general, I'm just not with names today, had commented about the deputy city administrator, I just wanted to like get his viewpoint on the financial aspect.
I would say that Mr. Imig's comments are right on with putting it, starting it with the CIP program and knowing that as part of the discussion as '24, '25 go forward, if the council still is tending to say, yep, this is still in those years of CIP, then in '24, you're talking about staffing, potentially starting to find funding in the '25 budget, maybe a full-time position or two other equipment might be needed. That all goes into, gets added in in '25, '26 as part of your budget prep and priorities then.
Thank you.
Alderman Schmelsling?
Maintenance. So I understand we'd have to maintain it like if it starts to crumble, but why is it different than what we do today with businesses maintaining sidewalks and, and the likes? Is there not something written up for trails? Or what exactly is the differentiating factor? Because I would just think that if Stratech's already, I don't remember who was doing it, but someone was actually helping clear a pathway already on the grass. It seems like maybe they would be willing to take on that responsibility like I do, and actually, I don't. I only have a little corner patch, but a lot of other people do in the city of Glendale for the sidewalks they have.
That's, that's, that's a political issue.
Yeah, because that would be my stance is, they would just be passed on, and they're benefiting from that, especially Aurora.
We can have that conversation. We've got six months to do that, so. Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, I'm hearing no motion being made, so it sounds like we're going to follow with the recommendation of staff. Okay, we will move on then. Next item is item 4D, Review and Approval of Proposal for Tax Incremental Financing Services and Project Pro forma Analysis. Next item is item four D, review and approval of proposal for tax incremental financing services and project pro forma analysis and developer negotiations. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lancer.
As before you is some information that Daryl had collected after speaking with attorney Fuchs. Thought that Ellers would be a solid consulting choice to start doing some feasibility analysis regarding this. Typically, some of this could be done by a third party or could be done internally. But Mr. Stube is, you know, two months away from retirement and trying to pull this together through a transition. Ellers would seem like a logical choice to use as a consultant for this.
And the recommendation actually came from Mr. Fuchs, who is the current counsel for the Community Development Authority. This is actually his recommendation to us. So. So we do have a recommendation from staff that we were the contract to Ayler's for an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Someone like to make that motion. So moved by Alderman Wheezy, second about Alderman Shaw, any discussion? Alderman Schmelzing.
So I guess my first question is, this is for proposed development. I've only heard bits and pieces about what that could be. And I know some of that is probably very fluid yet. Is there a way to pass this on to either the property owner or the future tenants of that space rather than us pay for it? Because I really am reluctant to take on that cost without having an understanding of why this would even be a TIF.
Answer your question is it's fully reimbursable. If we, if it moves forward and a TIF is approved, then the, the TIF funding compensates the city for the preparation. So yes, we're putting money upfront on what is likely to be a TIF. If it should fall through, then we spent nine thousand dollars. But if it goes forward, as I suspect it will, I've actually been in a number of the meetings with the, the potential potential buyer and developer. Then once the TIF is approved, the first year of TIF funds actually reimburses the city for the costs.
Right. I understand that part of it, but I guess I'm still. Why, why is this need a TIF in this specific location? It doesn't seem blighted in any sort from what I've seen.
So that is, that we're not noticed to have a conversation about today. To go into what, what a potential proposal might look like for that site. Because we don't have a proposal yet. What I can tell you is that the, the value added for the city would be significant. And, and so, and, and not, it does not involve any borrowing. It would, it would only, it would be assistance, but significantly more than what the undeveloped properties currently are worth. Mr. Lancer.
So to answer your question, Mr. Schmelzling. What Mayor Kennedy's outlining is basically that this, upon approval of the joint review board to create a TIF would be a TIF eligible expense. Therefore, it would just be part of a normal share where in theory it's, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent city. But it would be the county and all the other portions that would have taxing on the incremental value that would pay it. I think your question that you're trying to get answered is if for some reason a joint review board does not approve it. Right now, it would become a city taxpayer expense because I don't believe there's been any anything negotiated with the developer upon that they would reimburse up to a certain amount of planning or professional expenses if, if it didn't go through.
That was, that was my question. You hit it right on the head. And also just generally speaking. I understand that there could be a large development, but that could be done without TIF financing as well, potentially. I don't understand the reason, so I don't have a good basis to make a decision on why we should do this.
Bertie.
Their value of this study later? No, it's really just for this particular project. So if you, if, that's the part that's weird for me. We're asked to give nine thousand dollars. We were all worried about seven for something. I fully understand what we're doing on this. I don't understand. I believe in the long run, history will say in the little bits, I would know, I'd say it's probably a great thing. But sitting here right this second, I don't know much about spending nine grand.
So, so just explain, we have for thirty seven years had a retainer with the city attorney. And all of these things were part of what the city attorney provided for the city under the retainer. When we hired a new city attorney, we now pay an hourly rate. And this council chose to keep on Mr. Fuchs as the general counsel for the Community Development Authority. Where the CDA chose to keep him on for that purpose. He would be doing this by the hour, probably in excess of nine thousand dollars. His recommendation to us was to actually go with, with Ayler's. For the reason of one, it would be cheaper for the city or cheaper for the CDA. And that, that this is a project that is, that is very, very likely to be moving forward very quickly. Yep. All right. So we do have a recommendation from staff. Is there a motion to award the contract to Ayler's not to exceed nine thousand dollars? Move bottom and Wheezy, is there a second?
Second.
Second bottom woman Shaw, is there any further discussion? Alderman Schmelzing, go ahead.
Yeah, I got the mic. I'm just trying to think if there's a way that this could be passed on immediately to the developer instead of the, the city having to do this. I understand that our city attorney used to do it, but at the same time, we were already in a, you know, partnership with the Cypress folks and AIG with what at least my time on the council has been the main TIF activity. So that was essentially already a work in progress. This seems like something I would say I'd rather us have covered upfront, but is that something that could be done?
If I could just to respond to that. If we, if this were never brought before us today, Mr. Fuchs would be preparing this paperwork as assigned by the executive director of the CDA. And would be moving forward, the city would be being billed, it would be being billed by Mr. Fuchs to take care of this. The reason is before us is because we don't have a contract with Ayler's. So Mr. Fuchs is saying it will save the city. He would already be doing this and we wouldn't need to come before us for approval because he is the general counsel for the CDA. And if the CDA has a proposal like this, they move forward with it. He, out of a courtesy to the city, recommended that we go with Ayler's because it would save money. And, and so because we don't have an existing agreement with them to bill us by the hour. That is why this is before us today to take that, take action.
Looks a lot like more than that when I read the proposal, but.
I believe it's only because you're not accustomed to it, you're accustomed to having someone work on it behind the scenes.
Right. Lancer.
Just one point of clarification on beginning of TIF districts for Mr. Schmelzling. Typically, you have a situation where a lot of times you'll have a joint review board have some input where at least you have a meeting with them where they haven't been grouped together yet. And, you know, most of these things would have been, last time we, we had an environmental TIF. You know, but even that, I mean, we're going back over eighteen years since we've gone through this procedure here. So that's where, I mean, a lot of this even predates me being here. I mean, because I've only been here eighteen years. So when you get deal of six and seven, those were done in nineteen ninety-six, Bay Shore started in two thousand and two. And environmental TIF was kind of two thousand and three, right before as I got here. So there's not a lot here, but I mean, I understand your situation of how, you know, here's one ask. You know, where's the limit of how far the council wants to extend themselves? Because there is, you know, this is going to eventually come back most likely. If it's not moved to a TIF district that's approved, it's going to come back as a budget resolution to take out a contingency of the general fund. Because it'll, you know, most likely be a general fund expense.
I think I understand the, the logistics of it. Maybe it's more just a question of why TIF than anything else in the specific location? Because sure, there, there's a lot of, I watched how the base side one came together recently. So I kind of get some perspective of the process. So is this, are there environmental issues? Are there certain things that are making it a depressed location that I don't have familiarity with?
At this point, I'm not at liberty. I'm not at liberty to disclose any of the information right now when we do not have a formal proposal before us. We are in initial talks. I will though, ask staff to place an item for closed session so I can brief you on the meetings that I've had at our next meeting. So, sorry, I want to make sure I'm clear. The motion was to award the contract to Ayler's in the amount of fifteen, five for tax incremental financing services and for nine thousand for project pro forma analysis. Was that the motion that you made? The motion from staff, is that the motion that you made?
I believe he did.
Who, who made the motion? So you, you made the motion that was what staff requested, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you second, who?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just making sure we're clear then. All right. Is there any further conversation? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
They know.
Okay. Hey, you're allowed to. So motion carries though. All right. Next is item four E, review and approval of documents from Public Administration Associates for City Administrator Recruitment. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. See if I remembered how to make the microphone work.
You're making it work just by talking.
All right. Foolproof. I'm Dave Bredel from PAA. I had seen you last on January tenth, also on the Zoom call is my partner, Kevin Brunner, who will be working with you through the remainder of the process. So I don't know if it's agreeable that he could unmute or participate in the, the discussion or answer questions if you have any.
Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening.
So the documents that we had forwarded to you in an informational packet really kick off the recruiting. And so there were, were three documents. The first one is the, the position announcement, which is kind of the, the want ad for this. And we run that in various forms in the electronic jobs placements that we, we make. We try to spruce that up a little bit with a flash here, position profile. That's a little bit more eye catching and can go on LinkedIn and circulated that way. We send that to candidates directly as well that we try to solicit for the position. And the third is a draft, a video script. And the mayor has been gracious enough to agree to do a short video that we circulate as well on social media. That, that is a draft, so we don't want to put words in people's mouths, but it's an outline. And if there's anything in there that causes you consternation as a, as a council, we'd be happy to take another crack at that. So those are the documents that we're looking for your approval on tonight. If, if we can get to that point, then I would begin placing the ads tomorrow. And your recruitment would officially begin. The next time that you would see PAA again would be on the fourteenth of March. When we would have the summary resumes of, of all the applicants for the position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or Kevin, if you want to add anything.
I'm fine.
All right. So we have a position announcement, a brochure, a script I've read over and I'm not going to stumble over any of those words. So thank you.
Probably no dancing.
Yeah, no dance, no dancing. Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. The one thing on the brochure, the position profile. One thing on the last page, I'd really like to commend you guys have inclusion of is the statement under skills and experience of proven track record in the area of commercial development and redevelopment. I think that is a really, to me, a really key factor as we look at around the city and say, well, what can we improve and enhance? I think that's a, a great attribute to include. So thank you for doing that.
Other questions?
Alderman Schmelzing. Everything looked great except for the website on the position profile, just on the Glendale City Hall image, just get that updated.
All right. So one change, any other corrections or changes, any of the recommendations? Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion then to approve the documents and direct PAA to begin advertising the position.
I'll move as corrected.
Second about Alderman Wheezy, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next are commission committee and board reports. And Alderman Vukovich is excused tonight. She's under the weather, so I will go to Alderman Doherty.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Gilhard.
Nothing to see.
Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. Last week, we had the library board meeting. And I just made a few notes of Ann Behringer, who was the recently hired director of the library had, was released from the North Shore Library in December. Susan Drager Anderson, the previous director is now acting as the interim until May of, approximately May of this year. And commentary made by the North Shore Library Board President Kurt Glazner is that the architectural firm Rinca is, in his words, a little light on library design. Constant, after that, they toured several different libraries to see how things were put together, but he still said they're a little light. Cobalt Partners, the Bayside developers, actually, according to Kurt, started to push back on the square footage a little bit. And they were trying to push it back to twenty thousand range. And Kurt and the construction manager hired by the library board got them to say, no, it's not, it's going to be a maximum, you know, twenty-four thousand square foot. But there doesn't appear to be any potential expansion. So there was discussion of that as a potential previously, and that does not seem, from the current word does not seem to be in the range. And these are, this is just what was reported at the board meeting. There are currently no renderings available. But Kurt said that the building now looks like it's more, going to be more of a U shape where the library will be located on the ground floor. Susan Drager Anderson has been hired as a library can design consultant. She has a lot of experience with that. And she stated that they are still trying to figure out how much storage and collection shelving spaces are actually needed. And the final point is Baker Street Consulting, the fundraising firm that just made a very brief presentation. And they said that they're currently in phase one, their organization readiness portion of their efforts. Read that as background work. And they have established their fundraising, fundraising team and are working on an overall effort organization. Nothing, Jim did not mention anything about the advanced gifts of effort at this point. And he said the actual fundraising, the leadership gifts should begin towards the end of February or early in March. Phase three, the community gifts or general public donation requests will begin in May. And they're still confident in their timeline and will be able to meet the four million dollar goal by June. So that is, you know, the summation of his commentary.
Thank you. Alderman Schmelzing.
Fourth of July, some fun juxtaplication on that. We have to raise fifteen thousand dollars for our Fourth of July committee. And we're getting some concerns that that might be difficult from our, welcome to Glendale fundraising crew. So, so if anyone knows any businesses that are looking to do any type of events and get the name out there for the Fourth of July, let, welcome to Glendale know. Also, we're looking for a new main food vendor for like the burgers and the brats and such. So we might be reaching out to the Bavarian. The brick has decided they don't want to do food this year. They would pour the beer though, but we really need a food provider. That's, and we're in the midst of looking for bands. So if you know any bands for about four thousand, let us know.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Alderman Wheezy, for giving the library report because I was not there. I was working. But Music and the Glenn will be meeting towards the end of February and we're still looking on, working on our, our bands and acts. But we will, we, if all goes well, Nikolai has agreed to play one of our dates. So just a matter of now. So just a matter of now figuring out how long and how much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from staff? Still answer. Nathan chief. Okay, and I don't have anything to report at this time. All right, we'll move on then. The next item, we are noticed to convene in closed session in order to discuss personnel performance reviews as well as. A potential legal action regarding sixty eight oh one North Ironwood Lane. I would entertain a motion to convene in closed session. Move by Alderman Shaw.
I can.
Second about a man Galhard, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, we are now in closed session. I'll give Megan a moment there to pause the recording and do everything. So before we start talking. Okay, so it was moved out of closed session. It was moved by Alderman Schmelzling and second about a weasy was unanimous to reconvene an open session. We are now back in open session in terms of business out of closed session. We have one item that we will, we do need to consider. And that is would be a motion to direct the city attorney to file in circuit court a nuisance lawsuit regarding sixty eight oh one North Ironwood Lane. Would someone like to make that?
A moved.
Move out of a man Galhard, second, second to buy Alderman Wheezy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And are there any announcements or anything? All right, motion to adjourn is in order. Move by a woman Shaw.
Second.
Second about a man Galhard, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned at seven fifty.